Thank you very much, colleagues. I'll ask for screens on, please. Dogs too. There's a vicious animal somewhere in the system. And I'll just ask the clerk to confirm publicly about Quorum.
You do have Quorum, Your Worship.
Thank you very much. Welcome to the 13th meeting of City Council. I'm going to call on Councillor Hamu in just a moment. Before I do, just an announcement if I can. This is to the public and we advise you to check the city's website for additional meeting details. The City of London. Meetings can be viewed via live streaming on YouTube and the city's website. The City of London is committed to making every effort to provide alternate formats and communication supports for meetings upon request. And to make a request specific to this meeting, please contact councilagenda@london.ca or 519-661-2489, extension 2425. And with that, I will call on Councillor Hamu to provide the land acknowledgement, please.
The City of London is situated on the traditional lands of the Anishinaabe, the Haudenosaunee, Leninawak and Atawandaran. We honour and respect the history, languages and culture of the diverse Indigenous people who call this territory home. The City of London is currently home to many First Nations, Métis and Inuit people today. As representatives of the people of the City of London, we are grateful to have the opportunity to work and live in this territory.
Thank you very much. We have a particular treat today as we begin with the singing of "Canada". Tonight it will be sung by Eleanor Gabru. And she's told me to ask you all to not just let her sing, but to join her in such singing. A little bit about Eleanor if I can. She's been, she's born in the Forest City, so she's actually a local. I meet so few. Eleanor hails from a family of musicians. She describes your sound as R&B leaning with accents of jazz, soul and perhaps indie rock. Eleanor is a community, by the way, that's not frazzle rock, Councillor Lewis, I just want you to know. Eleanor is a community builder and educator with a formal background in psychology, local government and journalism. She moonlights as a singer-songwriter and who has performed in choirs and bands her whole life. She has found ways to intersect art with community work a few times over. Eleanor's debut album, quote, "A Late Bloom", will be released later this year. Colleagues, I'll ask you to stand and all of us to, as we join Eleanor and welcome her for the Canadian National Anthem. Eleanor, please come forward.
Oh, Canada, our home and native land. True patriot love, and all our sons command. With glowing hearts, we see thee rise, the true north, strong and free. From far and wide, oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. God, keep our land glorious and free. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee. Oh, Canada, we stand on guard for thee.
Ladies and gentlemen, Eleanor Gabru. Thank you, colleagues. I'll look for any disclosures of peculiar interest. I see none. We have three recognitions and I'm going to start with Councillor Fife-Miller, please.
Thank you, Chair. At this point in time, I'd like to recognise Maple Leaf Sports and Entertainment, MLSE Foundation and the Toronto Raptors, who were here on Saturday to unveil two newly upgraded basketball courts in West Lions Park. With their support and the input from our Muslim community, we've created a true testament to support our London family. West Lions Park was chosen due to its proximity to the mosque and to the size of the park. The courts are there and will support London youth and the Muslim community and is a space that highlights culture and togetherness. For anyone who hasn't had an opportunity to get down there and see these, these are exceptional pieces of art and exceptionally functional. So please get down there because I think they're a true testament to what community is in London and what true community can build. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Pelosi.
Thank you, Your Worship. Wanted to take this opportunity, recognising that the Dearness Home Committee of Management has been the same for all four years of this term of council. And as we come to the end, we had our last officially planned meeting and heard from staff and just thanks to staff, administration, residents and all their loved ones as we worked together throughout the pandemic. And thank you to the council representatives that make up the board of Dearness Home. Being myself, as I chair it, I wanted to extend thanks to Councillor Hopkins, Councillor Cassidy, Councillor Lehman and Councillor Hillier for four years of dedication to those in our community.
Thank you very much. Councillor Lewis.
Thank you, Worship. Colleagues, it's very rare that I rise to celebrate a Toronto Maple Leafs loss. But thankfully, I'm rising for baseball and not hockey. In a dramatic fashion last week, after scoring five runs in the top of the ninth inning, the London Majors came from behind to beat the Toronto Maple Leafs 8-7 in game six of the IBL Championship Series to capture the 2022 championship. It's both my pleasure and privilege to rise for the second time in as many years to congratulate the London Majors, who are back-to-back inter-county baseball league champions. After a 46-year hiatus, they are back in style and power on the diamond at Lebat Park. And they've continued to extend our streak and our reputation along with our London Knights, our London Lightning, our Olympic medalists and our London Majors as a city of champions. So I want to extend my congratulations to Rup, Scott, Angela, all of the players, their families. And for all of the fans who came out to support them throughout the season. It was great to see on the nights that I was at the ballpark, so many people out to enjoy beautiful Lebat Park and our London Majors playing. So next year is 2023. Let's hope it's a three-peat.
You look very dashing with that cap, Councillor Lewis. Thank you very much. Councillor Van Holst.
Thank you, Your Worship. And I'd like to provide an acknowledgement to the Wright Clinic. I had the opportunity to attend the rededication recently. And it's a wonderful partnership with the Glen Cairn Neighbourhood Resource Centre. And they are now serving 700 low-income individuals to provide those people with much-needed dental treatment. It's a wonderful model and a great, a great example of what we can do when we work together with businesses and our educational institutions. And I think this is something that we can duplicate and do more of. And I hope council will have the opportunity to participate in that in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. A lot of reasons to celebrate London this evening. There are no confidential matters to be considered in public. And for item four, there are no close session items, which brings us to item five, "The Minutes", held on September the 6th. And to put those on the floor, I'll look for a mover and a secondary. Moved by Councillor Van Mirberg and seconded by Councillor Cassidy. Thank you very much. Any discussion? I see none. Let's call the question.
Councillor Van Holst.
I vote yea, Your Worship.
Thank you.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to zero.
Colleagues, we have two items under Communications and split them for the purpose of consideration. The first item 6.1 is 1407 to 1427 Hyde Park Road. And typically, our, the motion, and I don't want to presume it ever, is that we move it to the appropriate place in the standing committees. And for that, I would look for a motion, please. Moved by Councillor Hillier, seconded by Councillor Fife-Miller. Comments or questions? Let's call the question.
Councillor Helmer. Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to zero.
Thank you. The second item deals control structural replacement, communication from AM Velastro. I understand, Councillor Fife-Miller, you would like to speak to it.
Thank you, Chair. And through you, I found when I read the letter here, I think the letter itself is fine till it gets to the bottom. I think some of the personal attacks that we see on councillors and such aren't things that we need to see at council. I think that this letter goes goes too far in addressing some of the concerns and such that we have. So I'd like to, I'd just like to kill this here if we could, please.
So you're making a motion to not receive this communication. Do you have a secondary for that? Councillor Hamu, thank you. Any other comments or questions? I'd like to ask the Deputy Mayor to take the, take the mic, please.
Sure, I have the chair. I'll go to the mayor.
Thanks very much. This is an extraordinary decision, should we decide to take it, where we don't typically receive a communication. I'm inclined to support the motion as moved and seconded by Councillors Fife-Miller and Councillor Hamu. Because some things are so offensive that frankly, I find it quite insulting. And I think that we have an obligation as members of council to be thoughtful, to be caring, to be very mindful of the communications we receive. But when it gets to be extremely personal, as it has in this communication, that has no place in this council. So I hope that council members will support the motion that's been duly moved and seconded, because I think it's important that we also make that as a statement. Thank you. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. I don't have any other speakers at this time. So I'll go to the chair.
All right, let's ask that question. Any other comments or questions? Councillor Lewis.
Thank you, Your Worship. I wasn't going to speak to this, but your words have caused me to rise. I'm going to support this motion because frankly, this is not the first time that this particular individual has been abusive towards individual members of council, both in writing and at standing committee meetings, in public participation and in delegate situations. Criticism is welcome. Constructive criticism is absolutely fair. Personal attacks are not. And, you know, when I see a repeating pattern of this, then I'm inclined to frankly stop listening to someone who just is interested in making personal attacks, which is what it feels we are venturing into. So I will be supporting this.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions? Could I, I wonder if I could ask Ms Westlake-Power just to read back the motion, please?
Thank you. Through the chair, the, excuse me, the motion that is before you reads as follows, that no action be taken with respect to the communication from AM Velastro with respect to item number five, 2.5 of the 12th report of the Civic Works Committee.
Thank you. And with that, we will call the question.
Motion carries 11 to three.
Thanks very much. Colleagues, there is, there were no motions to which notice has been given to the reports, 8.1, the 15th Report of Planning Environment. Councillor Hopkins, please.
Yeah, thank you, Your Worship. I would like to put on the floor the 15th Report of the Planning and Environment Committee. I have heard from no one to pull anything. I just want to make sure.
Thank you. Does anyone wish to have any one of these items pulled for voting purposes? Councillor, I see none.
And with that, Your Worship, I would like to put all items on the floor. Just to review our meeting, we did receive the Building Division Report for July 2022 and an update. We had two public participation meetings, one for 4680 Wellington Road South for temporary use of a driving range. We're extending it for another three years. And the second public participation meeting was for 1407, 1427 Hyde Park Road. This is for a commercial structure as well as townhouses. There was a request by the applicant to refer it back to staff for further discussions and it was supported by the committee. We also received the deferred matters list as well.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions with respect to any of the items on the Planning Environment Committee? See none. It's been duly moved. We'll call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to zero.
Councillor?
And that is my report.
Thank you very much. For the 13th Report of Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee, I'll call on the Deputy Mayor.
13th Report of the Strategic Priorities and Policy Committee, it looks like all 15 members of council were present and we agreed on pretty much every item on the list. So I'm happy to put all of them on the floor together.
Does anyone wish to vote on any of these items separately? I see none. Back to you, Deputy Mayor.
I'll just highlight a couple of things. We continue our strong fiscal performance with the mid-year operating budget reports on both the capital and operating side. Significant movement forward on our next steps on anti-racism and anti-impression with the framework being presented. And of course, actions to implement London's UNESCO designation as Canada's city of music are highlights from this report.
Thank you. Any other comments with respect to the SPPC report? You know, it's interesting, with more people around the table, my neck is stretching both ways. A little more workout here, so that's probably not a bad thing. I see no other comments, therefore, let's call the question.
Councillor Helmer. Closing the vote, motion carries 14 to zero.
Thank you very much. Deputy Mayor?
That's it for this report.
Thank you. Report of the Civic Works Committee. I will call on Councillor Pelosi, please.
Thank you, Your Worship. It's a pleasure to put all items except number eight, 2.3, forward for consideration. All members were present at committee and all the votes were unanimous. And I've been given no other notice to pull anything except for eight being 2.3.
Does anyone wish to have any other item voted on separately? I see none. Councillor Pelosi?
Thank you. The, it's not often that the Civic Works Committee had the thickest agenda for that around a committee meetings. The main topics were the White Oak Road to Jalluna Boulevard, extension of Bradley Avenue. We did receive a staff We did receive a staff presentation for the draft connected and automated vehicle plan, and environmental assessment. Everything was a fulsome conversation.
All right, thank you. Does anyone wish to discuss any item with the exception of two point three? Councillor Hopkins?
Thank you, your worship, and thank you to the committee. I just have a couple of comments I'd like to make on two point five, which is the Harris Park Erosion Control Structure Replacement. Really good to see this coming forward. I know a lot of work has been done on, to the west with the West London Dyke, and I've often wondered what's happening on the other side, so really pleased to see this coming forward. Also, two point seven, the agreement for the Thames River Experimental Stream Science Facility at the Adelaide Pollution Plant, it's really good to see this agreement. I know we've had an agreement in the past, and to continue that relationship is really important. Pleased to see that. I do want to make another quick comment on two point six, which is the Oxford Street West Improvements, it's the EA study. When I was reading the report, I was so pleased to see this project coming forward, it is in the West End, and as you know, with all the development that's going on, the, in the West End, having projects, infrastructure projects catch up, is really important to residents in the ward, and I understand there is a referral going back, I, I know the financing needs to be sorted out, and I really look forward to this project coming back as soon as possible. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments on any, any other items on the twelfth report of Civic Works, with the exception of two point three? Councillor Van Merwe, go ahead, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to speak to two point two, the Bradley Avenue extension. This, this portion that's being discussed currently is certainly a harbinger of, of good things to come, because it's absolutely key to relieving traffic pressure and congestion in southwest London. So, again, we do have something to look forward to, and relief is on the way.
Thank you very much. Any other comments? I see no other, councillor Palloso?
Thank you. All the items are on the floor then, except for two point three, if you wish to call the vote.
Let's call the question.
Sorry, your worship, just, I assume that's all items on the screen to be voted for, with the exception of two point three, as it says, the current agenda, all of it right now?
Let's always double check that with the clerk, because he has wisdom.
Yes, that's all but number eight, two point three, that will be corrected.
All but two point three, colleagues.
Closing the vote, motion carries fourteen to zero.
Councillor Palloso?
Thank you. I will put number eight, item two point three, being the Windermere Road Improvements Environmental Study Report, on the floor.
Thanks very much. Comments or questions? Councillor Van Holst? Councillor, I think we're losing your audio.
Thank you, your worship. So I wanted to bring this item up for a, a little bit of a discussion. It's the protected laneways, or the protected intersection here, particularly the, the corner, the right-hand turn from, from Windermere going west to Richmond North. It, that raised a couple of red flags for me. One, because it's, it's a greater than ninety degree turn that's been created there, which is similar to the problems that we saw on River Road, and I brought that forward to council previously. And the, the other reason I was concerned about this is that I'm receiving a lot of comments about the, the protected lanes at, at Hail and Bridges, and a lot, a lot of negative comments about this. And so, on, on social media, I put in a, a potential other design, where instead of projecting curbs into the intersection, we simply pull the, the, the active transportation behind the existing curb to, as a, as an alternative, to see how people would respond to that, and that seemed to be getting the majority of the, of the positive responses. So I, I, I see that, though we have this aspirational goal for protected lanes, it seems like there's other ways to go about it that, that are less challenging to the people trying to navigate those, those curves. So my, perhaps my first question would be, what would happen if this were to be referred back to look at a different design?
Well, let's, let's ask staff that are on your mission, would you make some comments, please?
Thank you, your worship. If this were to be referred back to consider a different design, we would need to amend the contract with our consultants, reopen the EA, which at this point, we're prepared to table and, and put up for thirty days of public consultation. Given where we are with council and restricted acts, I imagine that the best thing would be to refer the entire thing back to be tabled with the new council. If we were to refer it back to make a scope change to the contract with this councillor, it would require the city manager to approve that change under the restricted act, which, given council direction to do so now, I believe may be problematic, although I would defer to the clerk on that. Our process in, from a technical perspective, would be to ask the consultant to prepare the design, look for utility and environmental conflicts, look for land acquisition impacts, evaluate it against the same criteria as the other designs, and take it up for public consultation, probably in the range of about thirty-five to fifty thousand dollars. I imagine it would add several months to the study, and then we'd bring the entire thing back sometime next year.
Councillor Van Holst, you said you had a couple of questions.
I do, thank you very much. So, your worship, that, that does seem like it would be quite a bit of work, might be worth it for some people's perspectives. Maybe I can ask this question. Going forward, would it require, I guess, what I would like to see going forward is perhaps multiple options that the residents can look at when, when we're looking to create a, a protected intersection. So, as in, in future EAs, there might be more than one design. I think in this case, it was just one option that was presented. Now, would, is that possible? Would that require a motion from council, or is that, is that something that could be easily implemented in, in, in future intersection designs?
Well, let's ask Miss Share.
Thank you, your worship. So this design does meet all Ontario and national standards for how a protected intersection is built. The expectation around protected intersections at locations with higher volumes of cycling and pedestrian traffic is to provide that island in the intersection to not only shorten the crossing distance and protect cyclists and pedestrians, but to also reduce the right turn speeds, which can present a safety issue. We do look at each intersection and each corridor as a unique space, so a number of options were reviewed as part of this process. This option is the one that meets standards. I don't require a motion for us to consider other options, but we generally would not take forward something that does not align with the best practices and standards as an option for public consultation.
Thank you. Are we good, councillor?
Well, your worship, that's, I, I think that's a little disappointing, in that, is that there are a number of, there are a number of practices, and, and I don't, what, well, we'll see. We haven't yet seen what these intersections are like in a slippery winter, and I know there's been a number of concerns about those, and I, I do share those, some of those concerns. So, in, in, and, and I think that perhaps some more discussion should be made about it, so I'll make a, a motion to refer this entire item to the next, early in the next council, and look for a secondary.
Let's see if you have a secondary. We'll look around the table and on screen, is there a secondary for the motion of deferral? Councillor, I see no secondary. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, your worship. That's fine, maybe, and one, one last question here, the, and it's regarding the, the, the cycle lanes, I know it's going to take a, a while to get many of these in place, and often we see sidewalks without pedestrians on them, and I, I bring this up because, and Hamilton Road, we recently had a tragedy where a cyclist was killed at four AM by a hit-and-run driver, and I, I wonder, at that time, there would have been no one on the sidewalks, and perhaps that might have been avoided if a cyclist was able to use their discretion to ride on, on a sidewalk, and...
Can I move you to a question, councillor, please?
Yes, so when, when was the last time that we considered relaxing the restrictions on, on cyclists riding on, on a sidewalk?
Point of order.
Councillor Palloso?
I will just note that we are at council versus committee, he's had the opportunity to ask questions at committee, and he's due to speaking time and did not have a secondary for any of his motions.
I am, I'm, I'm aware of councillor Van Holst's time, time allowance, and he still has time for that. I think I'm going to allow Miss Share to respond to that.
Your worship, I've been in this position six years, it has not been reviewed in that time. It is generally not accepted practice due to the risk to pedestrians and the confusion it may cause for drivers who may still be out at different hours of the evening, who would not necessarily be looking for a cyclist moving at some speed if they're going counter flow to traffic.
So noted, thank you. And you indicated that was your last question, I'll move to councillor Lewis, please.
Thank you, your worship. Again, I wasn't planning to speak to this item, I was ready to pass it, however, I cannot let the comments from councillor, from Ward One, go unresponded to when it comes to the cycling lane on Weyvel and Bridges. And listen, this project has had absolutely its share of problems. However, just as recently as yesterday, I was riding the route with Jamison Roberts, who used to be a member of our Cycling Advisory Committee, pointing out both the good, the bad, and the ugly. A week prior to that, Mr McCray, our Director of Road Operations and Transportation, similarly came out with me, rode the entire length of the cycling lane. Yes, there is some adjustment period for drivers. However, we don't make road safety engineering decisions based on social media opinion. And unlike the councillor, I've actually repeatedly pushed back to folks saying the lanes are too narrow, they're not, they're three point two meters. The average mid-size North American vehicle is one point nine meters, even if you get into an F-150 or, or a GM Sierra pickup truck, you're talking about two point two meters average width, that's a full meter still. Our city buses are only two point four meters. We've had a winter, with all due respect to the councillor, because I live on Weyvel, so I've experienced a winter with bike lanes right in front of my house. There have been no increased accidents as a result of bike lanes. In fact, part of the benefit of the, the road transformation on Weyvel, to include bike lanes, has been, the road narrowing has actually decreased speeds on a roadway where we have two elementary schools, a secondary school, and a community centre. I have a, a bus stop in front of my home, I have one of the elevated bus platforms for, for boarding and, and exiting transits. Mr McCray was, was excellent in terms of explaining to me why those are necessary there too, because they did seem to be a little, a bit of an unusual engineering design, but once they were explained to me, it made perfect sense, that it's for the raising and lowering of the ramp so that access to the buses can be provided at curb height, which is what the old transit stop offered as well. So, I'm going to say this about the Weyvel Bridges bike lane, this is not the, the design I personally would have picked, but I'm not a roads engineer, and I trust our staff to have implemented what is required for road safety. We're going, we're going to have a lot of vulnerable road users on that Weyvel Bridges bike lane, two elementary schools and a community centre. There's a lot, and I've seen it already with the start of the school year, more young people riding their bikes to school. It's not an overwhelming number yet, but we know that that number tends to grow over time as people get more comfortable with it. So, I, I want to share with all colleagues, I pointed out to Mr McCray when he came out for his ride with me, some areas of opportunity to look at some tweaks and some adjustments, to look at some of the sign pollution frankly, where perhaps we can have two signs on one post instead of a post every three feet with a sign on it. He was perfectly willing to take that information, write it down, and when the project has been in place for a year, review and look at making some minor tweaks and adjustments to accommodate some of the concerns. But you know, they've also reviewed it during the process. At Hail and Bridges, there was a concrete barrier that was poured incorrectly, and it was fixed, because it was noted and it was repaired, so we, we had, the contractor had to take the old one out and repour it. Ever since that repour, the complaints have disappeared. So yes, there was a problem, because there was a mistake in the implementation, but that was addressed by our staff and by the contractor. So I've lived with a frustrating project for the last year, I have neighbours who still won't talk to me frankly, over the disruption, and they absolutely shouldn't have been three months not being able to park in their own driveways, but that was an implementation problem, it's not a factor in whether or not the bike lanes are going to have value for road users to be able to travel safely. So I'm just going to wrap up by saying, we have to do better on how we implement, but that doesn't mean there are not values to these things, and yes, there is going to be an adjustment time for drivers, but if you follow the speed limit, and you pay attention, and you're not on your phone, and you're not talking to the person in the backseat or whatever, if you're in control of your vehicle at all times, the way you're supposed to be, then these lanes are perfectly viable ways to get around the city by car, and for the cyclists, they do provide a much safer experience.
Thank you, councillor, councillor Cassidy?
Thank you, Mr Mayor, and I did plan to speak to this, because this is wholly in my board, it is no longer shared with Ward Seven, based on boundary changes that took place before the last election. There was a lot of public engagement, staff held multiple meetings and invited the public to come and give their input on this, on the different proposals. I want to have, I have a couple of questions for staff. So with the nine, the, the greater than ninety degree angle, Ms Share sort of touched on it, can you repeat again, Ms Share, the reason why the wider turning angle is put into these intersections?
Since it'll be said twice, I'm sure it'll be nice and brief, go ahead councillor, Ms Share.
Thank you, your worship. So the, the intersection at this location is based on the skew of the roadways, and without realigning the roadways entirely, we do have a, a bit of a skew to the, the intersection proper, so that's going to adjust your geometry, but we actually want to have a smaller radius on those islands, because it does slow down the right turning vehicles to what would be the design speed, which is safer for people who are crossing the road or nearby.
Councillor Cassidy?
Thank you. A, a second question about cyclist and automobile collisions, especially the, the really serious and fatal ones. I have a, a, a guess that it's often, or usually caused by right turning vehicles that don't notice a cyclist who's, who's going straight. Is, is, do we have stats on what is a, a common cause for those kinds of automobile and cyclist collisions?
I sure hope that was set up in advance, because that's a lot of data to have on hand. Ms Share, go ahead, please.
Through you, your worship, unfortunately, you're correct on that, I do not have that data at hand. There are a variety of types of collisions for cyclists that occur in the city, and I, I would be able to follow up with some direct data to get the councillor, she prefers.
I'm sure that will be acceptable, Ms Cassidy.
That's fine, just from things that I have read, talking about cyclist safety and different books that, that have been provided to councillors by community members, I do know that is, when cyclists are obeying the rules of the road, the common, a common cause of accidents is vehicles turning right. So if we're going to slow down those right turning vehicles, it will only improve cyclist safety. Can you confirm, Ms Share, that there is a right light, a right, a red light camera at this intersection as well?
Ms Share?
Through you, your worship, I should know the answer to that, and I'm afraid I don't have it at, at hand. However, with these, these particular installation of these turn accommodations in the protected intersection, what it does is provide a safe spot for cyclists to stop regardless of the phase of the light. I can certainly confirm the red light camera locations, I just don't remember them off the top of my head.
I'm pretty sure...
Councillor Cassidy, go ahead.
Thanks, your worship. I'm pretty sure there is a red light camera there, and I know when we approved the red light cameras in the last term of council, what staff told us, what they, they were the top ten intersections for serious collisions, especially from... intersections for serious collisions, especially from cars running red lights. So, all of these things point to an intersection that needs safety improvements. This is a major route for cyclists and pedestrians and automobile traffic to go both to University Hospital and for students going to Western University and home again. To say that this intersection might not warrant the best kind of safety measures put in place is false. I was not at the meeting, but I did follow the meeting. So, I knew what the discussion was going on, and I was prepared to jump into the meeting, but I know that the committee had it well under control. This absolutely is the right design for this intersection. As I said, there were opportunities for residents in the area. Ward Six, Ward Seven, Ward Five all come up close to this intersection, and there was ample public engagement, and staff did an excellent job in doing that. This has been a long time in planning and designing, and now it's coming to fruition, and I'm so happy to see that happen. I know of this same sort of intersection near Catholic Central High School, where my daughter goes to school, and it absolutely slows cars down at this intersection. And you know what? It doesn't just slow down turning cars, it slows down cars that are going straight, because there's a perception that there is a narrowing of the road, and there is a perception that they should slow down, because maybe I might not fit through. As councillor Lewis pointed out, there is ample room for cars to fit through on these intersections, but that perception causes vehicles to slow down. That is a good thing. There is no right that anybody in this city or anywhere holds to speed around an intersection, turning right or going straight, as fast as they possibly can. There is no right that any of us hold to do that. We have an obligation to move our vehicles safely and to respect all users of the road, especially the most vulnerable pedestrians and cyclists. I want to thank staff for all the work that's gone into this, years of work. I'm really happy to see this coming finally into Ward Five.
Thank you, councillor Turner.
Thank you, Worship. Really quickly, I just want to thank councillor Lewis for his comments. I think they're bang on the nose. One of these intersections was installed at Commissioners and Rideout in Ward Eleven and Ward Twelve, and I'd imagine councillor Pelosi probably received a lot of letters as well, as I did, and concerns about the new design. First, just give it some time, and two, this is a really key component of very dangerous intersections that are kind of askew. They're offset, they're not 90-degree intersections, and they do require a lot of caution as they approach, as drivers use these. And it creates this blind spot for vulnerable road users, especially cyclists. So, I'm happy to see this move forward. I'm happy to hear the comments from my colleagues that are unequivocal on support for this. We are not engineers as councillors. We are councillors, and the work that's been done, that went through the EA and through the public discussions and the adherence to these standards, should be recognized and understood that the intent here is clear, to make the road safer for all users, not just cyclists and pedestrians, but also motorists as well. And I'm supportive of the proposal as it's put forward here, and I'm glad we did not see a second for the motion that had been put forward.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or questions with respect to, oh, I'm sorry, Deputy Mayor Morgan, you are on the list. Go ahead.
Yes, I'll be brief. I can confirm for councillor Cassie that there is a red light camera there, not because I've received a ticket, but because I've been in the area recently. And I'll also say this is one of the intersections that has been added to our traffic, integrated traffic management system and the real-time monitoring that we have in our operations centre. Having toured the operations centre, I know one of the advantages there is not just the engineering design, but the ability to real-time monitor traffic flows through an intersection, to see when an intersection can be accommodated through changes in signalization and light systems, and when it has simply reached the design capacity for navigating people safely through the intersection. And so, this is an area where our staff would have excellent, an excellent read on what the current situation is with the intersection, how people are moving through it, and what we need to do to make improvements to it. So, I'm certainly supportive of the motion.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions on the side? I see none. Clerk will call the question.
Councillor Hamou? Closing the vote, motion carries fourteen to zero.
Counselor Pelosi.
The twelfth report, the Civic Works Committee.
Thank you very much. Now for the fourth report of the Audit Committee, I'll call the Deputy Mayor.
Thank you. We had a brief Audit Committee report meeting that only had one item on it, which was just a simple update on the internal audit review dashboard, so I'm happy to put the entire meeting on the floor for approval.
Comments or questions on the Audit Committee report? I see none, therefore we'll call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries fourteen to zero.
Deputy Mayor? Thank you very much. There are no added reports nor deferred matters. We have one inquiry. Councillor Van Hulst, you've made an inquiry. Go ahead, please.
Thank you, Worship. So, there's been quite a bit of dialogue about the temporary shelters being used in the city. And so, my inquiry, based on the fact that the city can do many things if there's a municipal purpose. And so, I'm wondering if our staff considers getting charitable groups to assist us with the homeless in terms of providing temporary mobile shelters, if that can be considered municipal purpose. And if so, what could be done to facilitate that, and what challenges might it pose?
Let's ask Mr. Mather.
Through your worship, it's difficult to speak broadly without the specifics of the location or the form of housing development being proposed. We need these specifics, and without them, it's hard to speculate what may or may not be needed from a building or zoning perspective, but we'd be happy to speak with any agencies that have wanted to have a proposal to discuss. Just an additional item for council's information, our current priority is working with the community on this year's winter response program, and we will work with the community leaders on the plan that's being developed by the community to ensure any zoning or building concerns are addressed.
Does that cover your question, your inquiry? Councillor Van Hulst.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'm pleased to see that staff, and I knew they were working with with those groups, because winter is upon us, and we see some new opportunities appearing to keep some people sheltered. And I hope that we can assist in making those arrangements.
Thank you very much. Colleagues, that now moves us to bylaws, and we are going to be dealing with bylaws three fifty-five through three six-zero inclusive. So, for this, I'll be looking for a mover and second for introduction and first reading of bills three fifty-five through three sixty, moved by councillor Van Mirberg and seconded by councillor Hillier. We'll call the vote.
Councillor Turner? Thank you. Closing the vote, motion carries fourteen to zero.
For mover and second reading of bills three fifty-five through three sixty, moved by councillor Fife Miller, seconded by councillor Lehman. Any discussion? Then let's call the question.
Closing the vote, motion carries fourteen to zero.
And finally, colleagues, for bills three fifty-five through three sixty, I will look for a mover and a second, moved by councillor Hamou, seconded by councillor Hopkins. We'll call the vote.
Motion carries fourteen to zero.
So, colleagues, just before we adjourn, weekend it was, what a week it was. You've heard some acknowledgements of the London Majors and their great championship, and the great work of Dearness, the great work of the Maple Sports and Entertainment and Foundation with respect to West Lions Park. Couple of things. I saw Mr. Stafford and staff at the West Lions Park, ensuring that that a great cooperative environment was established at the park for that double basketball court, and it is stunning, and I would like to echo councillor Fife Miller's comments about taking a look, if you haven't. It honors our London family. The colors of the court are the family's colors, and it's extraordinary. But the other thing that was extraordinary was homecoming. You know, we've had some interesting challenges from time to time. I'd like to give a shout-out to Western, their administration, their staff. I've spoken with councillor Hamou at length about this, and she talks about how well-done it was. I think the students acted well, and I would tell you, administration from Western acted well. Ms. Davison, your staff, and you, the police, everyone responded very thoughtfully, and it was great to see students in a very organized and good fashion, some big crowds, but I will tell you, all in all, I think it was a superb event, and I'd like to salute Western and our staff. So, Ms. Livingston, please take back to all of your department heads for the great work that's been done. I know this is across many departments. I pick on Ms. Davison just because I can, but I also appreciate that it really does go across all lines of the city, and I really, really am grateful for the work that they've done. And of course, I've mentioned Mr. Stafford and the folks at West Lions. So, with that, colleagues, I'll look for a motion to adjourn. I see councillor Hopkins. I see seconded by councillor Lewis. And with that, are we good with a hand vote? So, if you really are anxious by a show of hands, we're going to adjourn.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Meeting adjourned.